The Planning and Zoning and Building Committee, a roll call please.
Alderman Artwoods?
He's here.
Alderman Curielli?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Sasmarsky, not here. Alderman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here. We have a quorum. Next, I need the approval of the minutes for August 10th, 2023.
I'll make them up.
Second.
Any corrections to the minutes? If there are none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is report recommendation and ordinance amended in Chapter 12 of the City of Wooddale Municipality Code, Regulating Inspections of Unauthorized Construction and Post-Construction Variations. Director Springer, do you have a real brief presentation?
I do. I don't have a PowerPoint, but I'll give a little bit of a brief background.
That's good.
So, the council may recall a few months ago that we had a variation request for a house that was constructed about six inches too close to the property line, and they applied for the variation after the house was constructed. At the conclusion of that, the council did ask us to look into procedure amendments and possible ordinances that we might adopt to make sure something like that never happens again. So internally, we made some procedure changes and enhancements. So every time we have a foundation that has a setback requirement such as either new construction or additions, we flag those in the system to make sure that we won't be able to schedule the framing inspection until we get the final survey. So that should in itself address the issue so that it doesn't occur again. But Attorney Bond also drafted the ordinances that are listed as draft in your packet, and those give us another toolbox of ways that we can deal with builders who aren't following the rules, or aren't calling for inspections, or are proceeding against the city's regulations. So some of the additional fines or fees that are proposed to be added and that are in the ordinance are a fine if you don't submit your spot survey, a fine if you don't schedule your inspection, if you refuse to correct a violation, if you continue work beyond an inspection that's been failed, other than to fix that by them. So for example, if you're doing rough plumbing and the inspection fails, and then you close up the wall and put on the final fixtures, the water closet and the sink, there's fees for that as well. There's also the addition of...
Mayor, go ahead.
Sorry, Stacey. You're going through the list. There was one, and I meant to call you. Failure to schedule a critical final inspection. So, I get this all the time. Some people ask me stuff, and I'm like, I didn't get my money back from the city. I put down the bond. They managed to do a little sidewalk, or water heater or something. I go, did you call for the final inspection? Am I supposed to do that? How else are you gonna get your money back? So, I see $3,000. Is that for simple stuff like water heaters and little patios, maybe five grand? I'm just curious. I'm sorry, I should've called. I didn't.
That's okay. I mean, the idea was, somebody builds a new house, they don't call for the final inspection, people move in, they haven't submitted their final survey, and we haven't done the final inspection. You know, if it's a fence, or a patio, or something, we have lots of those that are still outstanding. And what we're doing right now to try and close those out is, we're going out and doing the inspections in the fall and in the spring. We actually have just recently developed a door hanger that we're gonna use to say, hey, you're here, we approved your final inspection, for smaller projects like that. This is really intended to be used in a much different type of circumstances.
Just checking because...
Go ahead, follow.
I think it was about a month ago, I got one of those calls. And I'm like, why do I gotta get a final inspection? The work is done. I go, well, you're asking me for your bond, right? How is the city gonna know you're done if you don't call them? Oh, okay. All right. So they must've called, and then... But it was minimal. I think it was only a couple hundred dollars, but I don't wanna charge them senior $3,000 because somebody didn't call for a... You know, okay.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, just in response. So as Springer indicated, those are gonna... If there's something like that, they forfeit their bond, we're trying to get them back. But if this is a construction project where there has to be an inspection to close it out, because there are some other issues, that's where the $3,000. You're not gonna get it for somebody repairing their deck. No, just so that's clear.
Sure. Alderman Ames?
So if someone's got a project going, is there some kind of a list that they have to know what types of permits they're supposed to get, or inspections, and things like that, so they can kinda check it off and say, oh, I didn't get my final inspection, yet I need to do that, or call for this? So they know that they're supposed to have these things done, right? Is there some mechanism for that?
Correct. So when the permit is issued, we actually, on the permit card, show the list of inspections that you need to call for. And generally, if you call for an inspection to schedule it, our staff looks, you know, and puts you on the schedule, and sees what inspections you had done already, and if you missed one, we'll let you know. So we like to work with people. The nice thing about these are, when we need them, to use them, there's the ability to... You know, people are either willful refusal to remain a violation. We've had some struggles with that, time again. Or, you know, if we run across a situation with someone whose constant we're having difficulties with, this gives us some tools. And the nice thing is, we don't have to stop the whole project, wait for them to seek a variation, or wait for them to go to administrative rotation. We have the ability to, you know, assess these immediately, and they can be per day.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, thank you. A couple things. One to piggyback on the mayor. If we could actually come up with a little different or clarifying language to that final inspection thing, 'cause that's kinda open. I like it, but it's just too open. So if we could just view, and the attorney, look at that, and come up with something. The other thing I was going through in, so packet page nine, item E, where you started adding the corrections, talking about the spot survey, scheduling rough framing inspection, inspection fee as specified in the master fee schedule may be imposed. So, for starters, may be imposed. Who's making that decision, and what criteria do we use to make that decision?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that would be based on the circumstances, and that would be the building official. So if somebody was scheduling snafu, or something of that nature, what we're trying to do is... And a question came from the dais when we had a matter that came before the council, and the question was, well, can we deal with that? And my response was, well, it's not in our code. This is designed to take care of those. So, you know, and again, this would be a last resort. If somebody who either willfully refuses to, or is just so, so, you know, disorganized, or not a very quality contractor, then we need to impose that. But if it's a... And the discretion would be, you know, if it was something that was intentional, and that they were trying to circumvent the code, then we would be able to impose those. If it was something that was just inadvertent, or some kind of snafu in scheduling, then that would not be the case.
Okay.
That's why it was May instead of shell, so it gives that kind of latitude to take into consideration. Well, there was a lot of water, it was raining like crazy, and so we had a job, we got flooded, we didn't get a chance to get that done, and so here it is.
Alderman Woods, you have a follow-up?
Yeah. So referencing, in the same section, referencing Section 12506G, it's referenced to the inspections, right? That covers the majority of the inspections, but the crux, or the main issue here was the spot survey, and the spot survey inspection's not covered till 12507. So the spot survey itself's not even being referenced in this. So maybe we need to add 12506G and 12507 of the code. If you could just look into that, I think that I'm correct on that. And then directly following that, "Or any framing begins prior to framing inspection." Well, the framing would always begin before the inspection, otherwise you'd have no reason for the inspection. So that language needs to... I don't know what the intent of the language was, but...
Which section? I'm sorry.
So that's Section E, the red section. So directly after 12.506, where you guys typed in the red, changing the language?
Section E?
E.
E. So packet page nine, paragraph E, midway through the red section, the changes where it says Section 12.506G, and you're using that as a reference to follow all the inspection, 'cause all the inspections are covered under 1205G, except for the spot survey, that's covered under 12507. So we would have to, if that's our intent to cover that, we would have to incorporate that too. And then, the language directly after that says, "Or any framing begins prior to a framing inspection." I don't know what you meant to say, but that's... The framing's always gonna begin before the inspection. That's how you get the inspection, right? So I was just, I'm reading it, I didn't know what... There's not enough there to figure out what the intent was, but...
Attorney Bond, go ahead.
Yeah, and I think it may have been, and that would be... It may not be the, "Any construction begins." I'll have to double-check what that was intended to be. I'll look into it.
Yeah, all right. Yeah, but like I say, I'm on board with all the stuff. I was one of the ones complaining that you're stuck here, having to approve something more, make the guy tear his house down, right? 'Cause he didn't follow the rules. And we know sometimes people do that on purpose. I'm not saying he did.
So this is good to clean that up. I just wanna make sure that we get it right. That's all I have.
Okay, go ahead. That's it?
That's all.
That's all you got? Okay. So I'll make a motion to adopt the amended... To amend Chapter 12. The ordinance, if... Have a second on that?
I'll second.
Including the attorney's...
Right.
Final review.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, against, motion carries. Okay, then next is an ordinance amended, the master fee schedule for building inspections, construction, and post-construction variations.
So that is actually the companion ordinance. The first piece was amending the text of the code to provide for the fees, and the second ordinance is actually listing the fees and what the amounts are. So it's really just the second step.
Okay. Any other questions?
I was wondering if there should be a maximum fee for the daily 750 per day fees? Whether it should be a maximum, otherwise that could go on forever?
Go ahead.
That 750 is the maximum per day?
Per day.
But yeah.
There's a certain number of days.
Up to $50,000.
Up to $50,000?
Gives a real incentive for somebody to get on board quicker.
That's it. Any other questions? Okay, I'll also make a motion to amend the master fee schedule.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion carries. Okay, items to consider at future meetings. We have the data center route 83 coming up this fall, and also we have a building code amendments also coming up this fall. Any other items to consider at future meetings? If there are none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you.
Calling the Public Works Committee to order, let the minute take her note that the same people are present. Make a motion to approve the minutes from August 10th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. One, approval of an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Superior Road Striping Incorporated for the 2023 pavement marking program, an amount not to exceed $26,305. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Approval of a proposal from Performance Pipelining Incorporated for the Addison Road Sanitary Sewer Cleaning, Televising, and Locating Services, in an amount not to exceed $33,160. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Okay, questions? Mayor?
Alan, real quick. So, I was reading this, so they're gonna check if there's anything in the way, is that what?
Director Lang?
I mean, we don't know this stuff. I thought we have all this GIS and all this great stuff.
We do. So the GIS data is approximate. We don't have elevation data in there, so this is part of the preparatory work for the water main replacement project.
Right.
So as we're planning and designing that project, we need to know if there'll be any other utility conflicts. So this sound locating system sends a transmitter through the pipe, and gathers not only lateral data, but also elevation data to know if there'll be any conflicts, as opposed to having to pothole each utility location.
Okay, yeah, I just... Sorry.
Director Lang, so when they are gathering the data, will that go into the GIS system? 'Cause now they will have that data.
Correct. They can provide that GIS data for us to add into our platform.
Do we automatically add it to our data?
We can upload it into our GIS, yes.
Okay. You say we can. Do we, or...
We are now actively adding this type of information, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Curielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Next, acceptance of letter of intent and approval to proceed with investment-grade audit from Veragee for the advanced metering infrastructure and leak detection project. That'll be my motion.
Second.
Director Lang?
Thank you, gentlemen. This has been the continuing strategic plan. I knew it was within the last strategic plan, and it'll be in our planning session on Saturday as well. So Public Works staff and finance department staff have been meeting with consultant group Veragee, discussing a advanced metering infrastructure implementation within the city, and they prepared a presentation for you. So I'll introduce Daniel Malone, Erin Perry, and John Lambert from Veragee.
Good evening, committee, and thank you for having Veragee here tonight to talk about some potential opportunities to upgrade some of your water technologies to be more efficient. As Alan said, my name is Danielle Malone. I'm an account executive with Veragee. Alongside me, I have my colleagues Erin Perry. She's a senior project manager. And John Lambert, he's a senior project engineer. So what we intend to cover tonight is, we're gonna walk through your current water systems. We're gonna walk through some of the different options that the city has to upgrade the technologies to be more efficient, to help cut down on some water loss, and to help detect leaks in your distribution pipes a little bit easier than you are now. We'll walk through the process, the next step, which is the investment-grade audit process, which you have before you, the letter of intent to get approval for today to move to that step, and then also the performance contracting process to get through completion. We've prepared some preliminary financial analysis based on your actual data, that we've been working with Alan and Brad on compiling over the last couple of months, so we can walk through the different financial models to show you kind of as a whole what this project would look like over the life of the expected project, which is 20 years. And then, of course, we'll talk about our team experience and the work we've done in Illinois. And I say questions and answers at the end, but please, ask questions as we go. If something comes up, just stop us. It's much easier being interactive than holding the questions to the end. So to quickly walk through your current water system, I know Alan touched on this in your memo, so I won't get too much into detail here, but you've got approximately 5,000 meters that Public Works reads on a monthly basis. So currently, what they do is they roll trucks throughout the town to collect those reads, which take about a day and a half to get. And then they've gotta take that data, and they've gotta get it back to your billing software system. So it's a non-automated process. They replace about 25 meters annually, and that's only when they malfunction, or they stop. There's no actual meter replacement program in place currently. There's no existing management for residents and businesses to detect leaks, or to manage their consumption data, which the technology exists now to allow your residents to be able to do that. The city estimates their non-revenue water to be greater than 17%. The IDNR's goal, or percentage goal, that they expect municipalities to meet is 8% and lower. So what our projects that we're talking about today directly affect that 17% to get it closer to that 8% or below. You spend about 25,000 annually on third-party leak detection studies to detect leaks, and the city currently, the way we're estimating it at this stage, is very preliminary. The next stage will get more detailed with the accuracy percentage, but currently, you're losing approximately about 127,000 to 325,000 in annual revenues. And what that's based on is your existing meter accuracy percentage to be performing between 90 and 95% accurate. We'll get more into detail on the finance slides, what those numbers mean, but basically the gist of this is, you definitely have revenues to collect to help pay and offset the cost of this project, so you don't have to raise water rates to be able to pay for it. The aging technologies, and the inaccuracies in the billing process, and the non-automated process also adds to your water loss as well, and we'll walk through those figures. So why do this type of project? Why update your meters? Why put in an automated system? Why put in a permanent leak detection system? So I'll touch on a few points at the top of the slide. So we're gonna reduce that non-revenue water percentage that we talked about on the previous slide, 17%, getting that down closer to the 8%. We're gonna reduce your operational needs. Everything's gonna be automated, so you're not gonna have staff having to roll trucks, drive around the town for a day and a half to collect these reads. It's all gonna be automated, and it's gonna go straight to your billing utility clerk that now can just literally push a button and send out bills. Improve service. We're gonna improve service for your residents. We're gonna provide a portal that your residents can get on and track their usage in their consumption data, and they're also gonna be able to, if they have a leak, they can see the consumption spike in their data, and they're gonna know that something's not right within their homes. Your improved accuracy of those meters?
We have a question.
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
When you need customer portal, we're working through some scenarios currently. Would your... I don't know, do you know anything about our existing portal that we've spent a lot of money on with Tyler?
Did you look at that?
You have a portal available through Tyler Technologies or Munis?
Would they, would your solution integrate with our existing platform?
Sure.
With a separate platform?
It can integrate.
Mr. Wilson, did you?
No, I was gonna say that the platform that you're gonna see here in a little bit, we can't even implement right now, 'cause we don't have the meter infrastructure to do so. So without this metering program, the platform that they're talking about, the user portal, above and beyond what we're offering currently, we can't do it right now.
My point is, you know, would I have to log into a different platform? Like I go to my gov, whatever it is, to pay a permit fee, or whatever, right, today? Do I need to log into a different platform? If we went ahead and did all this infrastructure?
Yes.
Would it be a totally separate platform? Or could we integrate their technology into our existing platform? So I log into one place, and I can do, pay for all my invoices, my permits, but I can also pay my bill. Have you guys looked into that yet?
Mr. Wilson?
It's a technical question, sorry.
The... I think I know the answer.
Yeah, so there can be links, you know, placed, third-party links placed on different platforms, so whether we have it, sorry. Whether we have it, you know, in, from the water portal, link into the Tyler portal, or vice versa, that's what we can do. We can't really integrate them so that they're both, you know, the same portal, but you can have links that will lead you into the other.
It would be a different portal, though.
Right.
It would be, as long as they can be redirected.
Right.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, anything with technology, there's a way to automate it, where we can link it together, but it would be a separate portal than the Tyler portal.
I don't know if I want additional technical debt, based on what we've been spending on other, but I think just redirecting people is good enough, at least for me. As long as there's a path to get to your portal, from the one portal.
And we'll show you the costs for the portal, too, as we move through the presentation, so you can see kind of what those costs look like. It's fairly minimal, in the grand scheme of things.
And I have a question, too, and this is probably for Mr. Wilson. I know my dad's in Bensonville, and there's something, I think it's, I wanna say it's called Aqua Hawk or something, where if his usage gets to be close to, you know, what he normally does, I get a text from somebody. Is that what this is gonna do, or do we already have something like that?
That's similar.
Yeah, again, the Veragee, again, without the modern meters, we don't have the capacity to do that. And so this, either Aqua Hawk, or Water Smarter, or one of the other ones, that would be, I believe, one of the things that would be available to the residents through that portal.
He's gonna be owl knocking on your door.
Yeah, we'll get into kind of the next step in the process, but it's a vendor symposium, so we've got all those different technologies. You have options for a reading system, you have options for your meters, you have options for the portal.
So right now, we don't have that?
No. You don't have anything, you don't have the meter, the way your meters are set up right now, you couldn't put that out to residents. You'd have to update the technologies.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, just for some clarity on what Alderman Messina was talking about. So the Tyler system, that system would go away if we get this system. Yes, there isn't gonna be two different systems, or...
Mr. Wilson?
No, I mean, since I'm in chief, but I mean, Tyler's here to stay. This would be, I guess, an add-on or bolt-on to the Tyler system. So it would enhance, I guess, a little bit of user experience, which I know isn't the greatest in Tyler, but it would be like a bolt-on or an additional service slash platform.
So for clarity, the module within Tyler, that works with the water system, that would be gone. This would, as you just said, bolt-on or plug-in, leak-up.
Mr. Wilson?
Correct. And to be clear, I think they're mutually exclusive, so you can have both, or you can have either. So you don't have to have a login to the Tyler portal to get into this third-party vendor, and vice versa. You don't have to log into that to log into Tyler. So you can do either, both, either, or neither.
Okay, I think we can continue.
Good. Okay. So I'm gonna go to the improved accuracy. So one thing I wanna hit on here is that leak detection location. So with the new permanent leak detection system, we're actually able to correlate leaks down to three feet of where the leak is. So your public work staff will come in, they'll look at a portal, it'll have a red dot on there. If the sensors hear between the two sensors, they hear a leak, that will deploy a public work staff out to that exact location, and they will find the leak within three feet of where that pinpoint is. So you're saving them time. You're saving the pipe bursting and having to repair a broken pipe that could have been saved, and repair a small leak versus the whole pipe. And then increase and enhance, again, your revenues, your utility operational savings, you're gonna conserve water, that resident leak detection residents love, and then security and resilience will be impacted as well. Basically, you're increasing your meter accuracy, which is gonna increase your revenues. It's gonna help pay for this project, so you don't, like I said, have to raise water rates and have the residents pay for it. You detect leaks sooner, that equals less water loss and maintenance costs. Less water loss and maintenance cost is going to equal less water and equipment purchase. So at the end of the day, all of the communities that we've worked with have saved money by installing all these technologies. So I'm actually gonna have you step in to...
Excuse me, Alderman Ames? Excuse me, Alderman Ames?
Just out of curiosity, so you said that annually we replace about 25 water meters, just if they're not working or they're not displaying. So how much does it cost, and how old are the water meters? Like, how much does it cost to replace a water meter today?
You guys can answer. Do you want to answer that?
Is that Director Lang that's going to answer that?
Yeah, the cost of the actual meters themselves varies depending on the size, obviously, but then you take into consideration staff time and overhead, and we can get more exact figures for you. I don't have the cost of the meters offhand.
John might have a better idea.
It can range from like $150...
Do you go to the mic, please?
Sorry. It can range anywhere from $150 to $200, all the way up to $4,000, depending on the size. And that's just for the cost of the meter.
Alderman Ames?
So is this program just for residential water meters, or is this for business?
We're proposing to change all.
Citywide.
Okay. And then how old are the meters now? Like, how, what's the age?
They're from 10 to 15 years. I mean, we had a newer program not too long ago, where we were changing out an area that's less than five years, but most of them are within that 10 to 15-year range.
Alderman Ames?
What's the life expectancy of a water meter?
I would say within the 10 to 15-year range.
Oh, so we're on track.
You're at the end of the order.
Alderman Catalano, Adrian.
This is a detection system, is it strictly on city property, but not on residential property?
So the distribution leak detection system would be on the actual city's infrastructure, the water mains themselves. There is a leak detection component to the metering aspect of things, where the meters can sense a continuous usage and notify the resident or the city that there is a potential leak inside your home as well.
Good. And how much is the estimated cost savings to the city?
We're going to get that.
They're going to get to it.
We've got a whole slide on that.
Alderman Messina?
I'll wait till you guys are done.
Okay.
You could continue.
All right, thank you. I wanted to give a brief overview of the types of technology, or how far technology has taken this field in recent years. So the meters that are available on the market now have come a long way. They carry pressure and temperature readings, along with instant leak and tamper detection. They have a 20-year guaranteed life cycle, and the accuracy also has a 20-year guarantee tied to it. There is built-in meter alarms, which are carried through and communicated through the communication system to the utility. So it's instantaneous, you know, you don't need to wait until you get your next bill to know that something's wrong. It will tell you immediately when it's detected. The new ultrasonic meters, which is, you know, where the utilities are going to these days, are a different technology of measuring water, and they don't have moving parts in them, so they don't degrade. So the accuracy that they come with is the accuracy that's maintained throughout the life of the meter.
So quick question for you. You had said that it would let you know right away, so for instance, with Aqua Hawk or whatever they have in Bensonville, will it text somebody in the home, or does it let the city know, and the city would let the resident know, or?
It depends on the meter alarm specifically. The city will be alerted immediately, regardless of what the alarm is. Certain alarms are carried through to the residents, like the leak alarms will be carried through to the residents, and that's something that Aqua Hawk might alert you on.
Okay, is that something automatic? I think the first time I've even heard of Aqua Hawk is, you know, my dad's bills started getting higher and higher, and I called the village to see what the problem was. Do you have to do that still, or is that something the city will notice right away?
So the city gets alerted right away, as Erin said. I'm sure with different software applications, there's different preferences that you can set up, and we're going to be going through a whole symposium, looking at different softwares and selecting the one that fits best for us.
Yes, go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, sure, I'll follow up on that. I mean, depending on what software we pick and what alerts we get, we are going to have to implement some new business practices, because if we get the notice on Monday, and it sits in somebody's inbox for five days, and that doesn't make any good. So we are going to have to determine who's going to be responsible for managing and monitoring those orders. So that is going to be an improved or enhanced or a brand-new, deeper, advanced business practice, and so we're going to have to create to manage this. But that's something that we're aware of, and we're going to have to do.
Yeah, and that's part of, once we get through the process, that's part of a training that we'll sit with staff and basically give out roles and responsibilities, and show you the new process is going to require X, Y, and Z, who's going to be doing this, so we make sure all of that is set up.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I was counting in my head the number of calls I'm going to get from residents saying, "They didn't, you didn't call me, that's why my bill's, so I'm not paying," right? And so you kind of nailed it, I hope, in the business, like, there's a business process, business rules, but also setting, and hopefully you can share best practices as a consultant, on like, this is how you relay it to the residents, because I just, I am a little concerned that this could backfire on us, and then it's, "Well, you guys didn't tell me."
I think if anything, that's probably what's happening now, right? Because you guys don't know until...
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. This is helping us sharpen arc tools now, because right now, if, say, a leak starts at your home on the first, and we don't get the readings until the 30th, your water's been running that whole entire time, there's just no way for...
I guess I'm saying, if you guys are going to, if you're going to come back for an investment, I would rather see the, I guess, the art of the possible, in that if text to a resident, as you know, oftentimes, we say, "Well, what did the resident do?" To me, I'd rather have the evidence to go back to them, be like, "Sorry, you got three texts on this time, at this day, this day, this day," as opposed to tracking down with Jeff, where the email is, right? So I guess I'm asking, if you're putting together the solution, can you please show us the art of the possible?
Absolutely, and that is a great feature, by the way, of the customer portal. There's what the residents benefit from, but in the backend, you know, the utility has those things on record. You know, they know when it was, when the resident was texted, and when the resident logged into the portal to look at their consumption, so...
For us, the data is super important, because it just helps diffuse when we have the evidence, just like when we have, they get tickets?
Yep.
And you go, "Here's the data," right? So, thank you.
Right.
And then, you may be getting into this, but in your experience, how much staff time, you know, is this going to take? Is this an hour a day on staff? Is this an hour a week? I mean, typically, when you implement a system like this...
Are you talking about during implementation, or after the system's in place?
After the system's in place. You know, are we talking, this is going to be somebody having to do this an hour a day, or three hours a day, an hour a week? I mean, is, based on your experience with other municipalities?
So, you know, it's primarily going to be your billing staff and your customer service staff that will be looking at it. You know, it'd be great if they make it practiced to look at it every day. Sometimes that's not possible, but as long as they're looking at it every week and spending a couple, two to four hours on it a week, you should be good.
Director Lang?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, not only, it will actually drastically diminish the amount of public work staff time involved in meter reading. We won't need to send anybody out for final meter reads. We can just pull the read instantaneously. Again, we don't have to do drive-by readings anymore, we won't need to do change-out routinely. So it'll drastically reduce the amount of public works operation over time on this.
Okay. Continue, please.
Okay. I wanted to touch on the distribution leak detection a little bit. So that, like Danielle said, that goes on your distribution pipes, it's not anything to do with your residents. It communicates on the same AMI network that the meters will communicate on, so it's two birds with one stone. You provide, you're provided continual daily monitoring of all of your, not meters, but your leak sensors that are distributed, and they're installed on your fire hydrants throughout the city. And they provide an audio sound every day. And what happens is, if the system knows, if two sensors can hear the same sound at the same time, then it's able to correlate where that leak is coming from by using those two sensors. So, and the beauty of it is, it's giving you continual insight into your system leaks versus, you know, the annual survey, which is performed, and that's just a snapshot, and you don't know what happens after that, right? You're able to catch leaks when they're smaller and before they surface, so...
Really quick, the graphic on the top there, that's just a sample dashboard that Public Works would be able to work in to see, see that red dot? That's basically a leak. So it detects it down to three feet of where it actually is.
Alderman Messina?
But here, you're saying sensors, so are we talking like IoT, like sensors that...
They're acoustical loggers that are attached to the valve stems on your hydrants or your valves throughout the system, and they listen to the pipes, they listen to the water that's running in your pipes.
I assume it's a no, but I'm going to ask, for the safety of all our residents, the data itself is not shared publicly with anybody else, or for any type of broader studies, meaning like, here's the data from Wooddale, let's join that with Alpro Village, and let's send that to the state, and let's see...
No, no, no.
No, your data is always your data, and that goes with the meters, too.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Well, it will talk through your AMI infrastructure, which is not a cloud platform, but, you know, the software is on the cloud.
Continue.
All right, customer...
Okay, customer portal. So it's self-service monitoring, so basically, this is the beauty of it, right? With AMI, you're going to get readings multiple times a day, and that's what enables your residents to be alerted about a leak, because if there's continuous consumption, because they're getting a read continually, and they see consumption, that's how they know that there's a leak, and then immediately, your residents can be notified. When they're notified, they have the ability to click on a link in the text message or whatnot, and it brings you directly into their account, where they can then manage and see their consumption, the same view that the utility has. So this is going to save your utility a lot of time, right? Now, your customer service people can be on the phone and talk with your residents as they're looking at the same thing.
There's a graphic on the next slide.
Yeah, there is, sorry.
One more.
Okay.
That one.
Yeah, so this is just a screenshot of the portal, so there'll be different, you know, places that you can go. You can research how you can conserve water, it'll walk you through how to resolve a leak when one is detected. You can go in and set your alerts, how you want to see them, you know, maybe you want to be alerted if you're approaching a certain dollar amount in your bill, or your consumption goes a little unusual. You can set all of that up in the portal itself, and you can also get a bill explainer, which will walk you through how your bill came to the amount that it is.
So, question, so it's a self-service portal, so what about for, you know, seniors or people that, you know, don't have computers, are not computer literate? Will they get a text or something, or how are they going to, or will they get something from the city, like ComEd sends out, that you're, you know, usually, when I get my ComEd bill, it'll say, "Your average usage is this, you're over your usage." Will they get a bill like that going forward? Brett?
Yeah, I don't envision us doing that, the ComEd thing. I don't envision us doing that. I guess, to your question, though, about the senior who doesn't have a computer, can't do the portal, that's where the notification to the city comes in, and then we would be reaching out. The only caveat I would mention, which I let go before, is if we don't have a good phone number or good email address, then we are going to have to send a letter to that, which might take a few more days, but that's just data currency, and, you know, we can work on that as we work through this process. One of the other things Erin mentioned is that it's going to get, you know, multiple readings per day, because the question we had asked all the time in finance, and I'm sure about it before, is to, "Well, when did I use the water? How did I use the water?" We're still not going to be able to tell them how they use the water, you know, be it a toilet, leaky hose bib, something like that, but we're going to be able to tell them when they use the water. There was a story, I think it was from up north, I don't want to belabor the point, but they're like, "Hey, why did I, how did you use all this water?" Well, they realized that while they were on vacation, they used 10,000 gallons of water, their neighbor's lawn was really green, so they figured that one out. Or every Sunday at 2:00 in the morning, they were using water. What's going on? So this will be able to help identify when they're using the water, be it past the flow for the entire month, or strategically, you have a party, forgot about it, you know, house guests, something like that. But yeah, to your point, yeah, that's going to be, as I said, the city notifications, that there'll be some data currency issues that we'll have to work through, but that's what the fallback position on that, is if the resident themselves wouldn't be able to create the portal for themselves.
Okay, and then just for clarification, you said email, so if a senior doesn't have a computer, they're not going to get emails, so are we going to automatically do letters, or?
It's a safe process that we're doing right now. We have, we run a high-low report, and we check on these residents, we issue them notices. It just allows us to do it far more in advance, when they're actually using the water, as opposed to at the end of the month, after we get the readings and notice that their bills are three times higher than they normally is.
The key theme?
Alderman Messina?
Key themes I'm hearing is automation, intelligence, intelligence for the residents, intelligence for us. If the resident can't act on it, we can help them act on it.
Yeah. Yes, and it is accessible on any cell phone, so it's not only email-dependent. And, you know, as part of the project implementation, we get out there, and we'll attend town halls, we'll attend farmers' markets, or any kind of senior center, you know, events to educate your residents about the new programs.
It's actually very effective to go to those types of events, and it's usually a lot of seniors that are there, so that's where we can help them and educate them on what's coming, and when we do call you that we got to get in your home, it's safe, you can, you know, make the appointment and let us in. So we do like to attend as much as we can.
Mr. Wilson, do you have a follow?
Yeah, just to follow in, Mr. Lang, get on real quick. But right now, you know, we'll go do the hang cards after the periodings or whatever, so, you know, we have, our options are telephone call, email, snail mail, or just going out and hanging a card. You know, if we don't have any other information, we'll send a letter, and then we also could have somebody go out, hang a card on their door, you know, the same day or the next day that we detect a leak or something. So, again, that'll be part of the business practices that we'll have to build with that data currency component built as well.
Okay, thank you. Continue, please.
Sure, so I just wanted to give you an overview of the investment-grade audit that we're proposing to perform for you. So April, August is already in the past, right? So these are some of the things that we've been working on to date. We've collected your actual consumption for all of your accounts for two years. We have looked at your water revenues and your billing and your data processes, and we've presented our findings internally already to your public work staff. So moving forward, right now, we're presenting to the committee. You know, if this goes well, we hope to be there on the 5th and be awarded to proceed with the LOI, at which point, we will start our sessions with the public work staff, bring different vendors, start educating ourselves about the available technologies out there, so that we can find one that's the best fit for you. And then there'll be price competitions, you know, this is how we get them to come down to their lowest prices, is they're aware that they're competing with other people. And we go through a process of pulling a selection of meters and sending them to third-party for accuracy testing, and at that point, we're compiling our final cash flows and financial models to present back to you at the end of the IGA. So I mentioned the vendor symposium. There's a multitude of potential vendors that could be partnered with, right? We will bring them in and have them do their bells and whistles, song and dance for you, so that you can actually compare on a technical level, on a financial level, the features and benefits of all of them.
So one of the benefits that Verigi brings to the table is we're vendor-agnostic. We don't make any of these products, we don't care who the city wants to work with, but we will help you vet them, so you can make an educated decision on what you actually choose. So you don't go with what you're used to using, and essentially, the revenues are different between one to the other, so vetting it financially, educating staff on the operational benefits of each system really goes a long way to picking your system.
So, question for you, you're mentioning financially, so how is this, how are you guys ultimately paid? I don't see a not-to-exceed number, so I'm assuming...
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Well, we'll get in, we'll get into that.
Alderman Messina, do you have something?
Just a good question. Implementation, I mean, is that, you guys, it sounds like you're doing some of the, oh, please say what it is, right? Are you doing the implementation of whatever solution we just had?
Yes. So we're turnkey, so we will handle everything from start to finish, engineering development, implementation, and post-construction. So all of the vendors that are subcontractors that are selected to help complete these projects will fall under Verigi, and the contract will be between the city and Verigi. So you're not having to manage, you know, seven different subcontractors at the end of the day. But we'll get into more of that. This chart is just to show you kind of the level of detail, and that's what I'm thinking you're going to be able to read any of this, but this is the level of detail we get into when we do vet the different technologies. Go ahead.
Mayor, please.
So, I mean, you're probably dealing with these companies, but like each company, do do you have a failure rate on all these companies? Because, I mean, one could be the cheapest, but they fail at 50% or something that's not going to be the cheapest.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to bring anyone to the table that's not going, that is not vetted and qualified because our contracts with performance contracts, we have to perform, we have an accuracy guarantee performance that if we don't meet that, we're on the hook to make it up to the city. So we can't bring unqualified vendors to the table. Go ahead.
Mayor, go ahead.
I'm just asking because I think my water meter's charging me too much.
Alderman, Messina?
Just to clarify, can I throw something up? You talked, you mentioned like, is there an availability threshold? Like in technology, it's 99.9% availability? Or you would essentially owe us, right? Is that the case in your platform? Like, meaning if they go offline, right? This is all supposed to be automated, right?
Right.
What is the guarantee that us, that these meters don't go offline and all of a sudden we can't collect?
So we, it's standard that they guarantee 99.9% of your network will be reading at any given time. So, you know, there's a lot of more detail to it than that. But as we're going through the project, we're also watching that and managing that for you. We're not going to deliver a project where you're reading less than that at the end of the day.
We are going to have that part of our agreement?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and it'll be part of your master that you sign directly with the vendors.
Perfect, thank you.
Alderman, Catalato?
From my understanding, that's right, every meter in the city of Woodville is going to be changed over? So they have to come into the homes, residents?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are those meters made in the USA or they made in?
Well, we haven't selected one yet, right? So we'll see, we'll see what we come to at the end of the day.
Continue.
I'll take it, thank you.
Yep. Okay, so the getting through the vendor symposium is important because you pick your partner, you figure out who you're basically going to go to contract. During the investment grade audit, once we pick that partner, then we can start getting into those 70 homes to do the random sampling and pulling those test meters. While we're doing that, we're kind of massaging the cash flows that at the end of the day is going to give you that financial picture of what it looks like. For purposes of today, these are very preliminary, they're based on actual data from the cities, but these are not based on any particular manufacturer, so it's just an average across the board. But there's three things that go into getting to that cash flow model. We've got to determine your scope, which is going to come through the vendor symposium. We've got to get your billing software baseline data. So we've got to figure out your consumption data to be able to project those revenue increases that you're going to, you're going to recognize. And then we also work with staff to figure out your operational savings. What are you, what are you spending today that we're going to save by automating your process? What do you have in your budget that we could pull forward that can go towards the cost of this project? So those three items and all the tasks that go in between them will basically make up the cash flow models. Some variables that I'd like to just walk through before getting into the actual cash flows, so again, as I said earlier, this is a turnkey approach. It's different than a bid spec. So we will handle everything, engineering, development, competitive procurement, materials, data integration. Data integration is a big piece of it. We're going to take those old meters out. How is that data getting into your billing software system? You do it direct with a subcontractor, that piece is left to fall on the city. We integrate all that data for you to make sure that you're actually billing your residents correctly. We've got a 24-hour call center. If we're, you know, something happens in the middle of the night that a resident has to call, they're not calling the city, they're calling our 24-hour call center. And then we've got our measurement verification and post-construction training. We determined the baseline, as Aaron said, through scrubbing about 24 months of your billing data that Brad had provided us. Your existing meter accuracy for the numbers that we're going to walk through on these cash flows is figured at 92% accurate. So your existing meter population is performing at 92% accuracy. The 10, 12 communities that we've done in the area, we've ranged anywhere between 87% we've seen, all the way up to 97%. We have clean water. So those meters don't degrade too, too low, but you'd be surprised the revenues that you're losing even if it's a 95% accurate model. The operational savings and the CIP contributions that we figured in this cash flow model is about $100,000, and that kind of came from Brad with the operational savings that we're going to see by automating the process, some funding that you have in there for meters currently. This is turnkey full design, equipment implementation for a full change, meter changeout, AMI implementation, leak detection system, and customer portal. This includes all ongoing costs. This is an important point to make. The hosting and the maintenance costs do not come to us. We build these models to show you what are you going to spend over 20 years long-term. Even if it's not money to Vergey and we're not charging it for you, you're going to be paying the AMI software company hosting and software fees. So we build that into our models to show you what those fees are. The same with the customer portal, you're going to be paying the customer portal direct.
Alderman, Messina?
Sorry, just to be clear, so there'll be a capital investment upfront and then there will be a recurring subscription model essentially.
Correct.
Where we would have a renewal every year essentially. That would be with your company though, just to be clear, or would that be with that other company that you've chosen?
That would be with your AMI company.
Peel off after the implementation.
Correct. We just, we want to give you a full financial look at this model over the life of the equipment. And we'll get to the cash flow where it shows year over year what you're going to be paying to who.
Okay, so you'll show that?
Yes.
Our renewal costs?
Correct, yeah.
Daniel, we have the annual M&amp;V.
Yeah.
Yeah, so then we have, I was getting there, the M&amp;V fees, which is our annual M&amp;V fees. So we, if you choose, it's optional. If you choose to keep that, we'll come back and measure and verify that those existing meters that we put in your ground are performing at the accuracy percentage that they should be performing. Because if they're not performing at that percentage, then you're not collecting the revenues that we say you're going to collect. That's optional, you don't have to keep that. Most communities keep it for maybe three to five years and then get rid of it, like an insurance policy is what I've had boards tell me before. We've got your approved water rates, and then we did include financing. The rate that we secured was about 4.25%, and that's at a 20-year debt service. Okay, so this is a cash flow summary, just because when you see the cash flow, you're going to, you're going to know why I did this. So looking at the top portion, so your estimated revenue increases in the first year, and that's at 92% existing accuracy of your existing meter population, we're estimating to be about $243,000. Over 20 years, you're looking at about $10 million. Your estimated operational savings, and this I think is a little bit light, I think this could be a little bit higher once we get into the actual conversations, but we're at about $100,000. Over 20 years, we're at $2.6 million. So your total program benefits is $343,000 in year one, and it's $12 million over the life of the equipment. Getting down to the second square, your estimated ongoing costs, so this is what the city is going to pay annually for those hosting and maintenance, the measurement verification in that portal, is $48,461. Over 20 years, you're looking at about $1.2 million. The estimated upfront project cost, that's 5.25. We also, like I said earlier, included the financing at the 4.25, which is going to add that 2.648 to the total cost. So you're looking at about $7.8 million total. And then adding in those ongoing costs, you're looking at about a $9 million project over 20 years. This looks cash flow positive in year seven, which we'll get there on the next slide, of $24,000, and your 20-year net benefits equals about $3.7 million. I know that's a lot, so let's go to the slide.
When you said upfront project cost 5.25 million, so that's, when we, if we were to hire you, I mean, we're going to be writing you a check for 5.25 million?
Either us or the bank. I mean, if you decided, so if you look on this screen here, the project capital cost is 5.2. You don't have to finance. Brad wanted to include financing to show you if that's what you chose to do. We financed over 20 years at that 4.25%. Your existing, again, meter accuracy is 92%. Your existing degradation, that's how the meters are degrading, the existing meters in there is .5, that's AWA standards. We build in declining water because residents will start using less water as they see their bills maybe going up because now their meters are more accurate. Water and sewer rates, we escalated at about 4%. And then the service escalation, we escalated it at 3%. So that bottom bar where it says new meter accuracy is 98.5, I broke out into three different columns to show you where the costs are associated with each different line item in the total cost. So your estimated equipment cost right now, we're valuing about $2.3 to $2.5 million. That's everything, all in.
That's not paid directly to the vendors.
Right, so that would be paid directly to the vendors if you chose to do that. We've done it both ways. We can carry it under our contract if you want us to deal with the vendors, or you can deal with the vendors directly. That's up for debate. But that estimated equipment cost, about $2.3 million to $2.5. Estimated construction is about $2 to $2.2 million. And then the estimated leak detection system is about $700,000 to $800,000. So the average over those costs is what makes up that 5.25. But if you look all the way to the right, that annual cash flow, when you add in the program benefits, which is this green bar here of the 343, to what you're going to be paying, which in that first year is 429, the city really is only going to be recognizing an $85,000 deficit at the end of the day. You look over, I said it was cash flow positive in year seven, as you can see that $24,000, but if you look from year eight to year 20, you're going to be actually driving about $3.7 million in revenues by doing a project of this nature. I'll stop for questions because I know that was a lot.
So, Simon, this wasn't really in our budget, so how, Brad, like, how are we going to pay for all this if we move forward with this?
Yeah, so excellent question. So the, I guess the beauty, if you will, of this is as we're finding some portion of that 17% that we're effectively subsidizing right now, that's what's going to help pay for this program. So if you look at the, I don't know, the green column, the annual program benefit column, so that's what we're expecting to pick up in the annual water increases for the, from the accountability from the meters and the savings from the operations and maintenance. So in the first year, you know, we're knocking out the budget for meters, we're knocking out the budget for leak detections because that's going to be in the ground. We're looking at overtime, we're not going to have to pay standby and callback pay. So that's what goes into that number. If you then compare that to, it's the third column from the right, the total program cost, the first year is 430. If you look at the next column over the annual cash flow, that's effectively what the program, the cost of the program would net out to each year. So the first year, the cost of the program, based upon the presumptions that Daniel presented on top, would only cost the city $85,000 because we're expecting to pick up $340,000. We're going to spend $430,000, so that's where that $86,000 comes in. So even after the financing, that's our first year cost, by the time you get to the fifth year, theoretically, again, based upon the assumptions on the top, we're actually going to be generating more in increased revenue and operational savings than the program is costing. So that's how we pick.
Mayor?
Brad, you talked about that annual program benefit. So like in year one, shows $343,000. Year seven, 560. Are you telling me we're saving $343,000 because we're not losing the 17%? And if that's the case, then how do we jump up another 200-plus thousand in year seven? You're throwing a lot of numbers at me. I mean, I'm usually pretty good with numbers, but I didn't get to see any of these, and I'm kind of confused. So how do I get from a $300,000 savings, all of a sudden I'm saving $1 million in a year?
Do you want me to explain that to me?
Brad?
So again, and then, yeah, I'll have Aaron jump in. So it's a couple of things. The annual revenue increase, that's what we're projecting to collect on the meter accuracy side of things.
Wait, wait. The annual revenue? Is that, are we looking at the annual program benefit? I want to make sure I'm looking at the right numbers.
No, so it's the annual program benefit. The 343 is the increased revenues you're going to collect by having accurate meters. So if, if you're, we go through the next step, the investment grade audit, we pull and test those meters, send them to a third-party testing facility, and they come back to me and say they're performing at 90%, that 343 is going to go up because this is calculated at 92%. So this is just, just for changing out the meters. This doesn't take into account any of the savings that you're going to see by automating your processes or by eliminating your leaks. That's on top of. This is just for the meters.
Mayor?
I feel like I'm missing something. So we changed the meters, we're at 92%, so we're saving 243 a year per se, right? But the number keeps going, getting higher and higher.
Here, you want to?
I'm confused.
Here, I'm going to have the engineer explain it.
So there's, there's two, if I could, there's, in the annual revenue increase column, there's two factors that are causing that number to go up. One of them is that there is an escalation rate, assumed escalation rate on your water, your water and sewer charges. That's, that's increasing. And then also, there is a annual, we're anticipating or figuring in an annual degradation. So those meters started out at 98.5%, 98% accuracy, and every year, they tend to reduce accuracy. So you're having two things working in there at one time, if that makes sense? Mayor?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, so one of these, as John mentioned it, and so this obviously would affect the model, is in the third yellow bar, the middle column in the third yellow bar, says that they're assuming an annual increase of 4% in the water rates. So if we say, hey, you know, for the next two years, we don't want to raise, we don't want to increase the water rates, cool, but then we're going to have to go back and they're going to have to update that model, which is the second column, the annual revenue increase. That's going to be modified by that 4% number.
Mayor?
So that's why it keeps going up on a fairly average basis, is because of that 4% number there. So we can change that to whatever we want that to be, we need that to be, once we go through, you know, the rest of the process. But that's kind of, I think, I think they were taking it as like an industry standard, an ABW standard right now for, you know, union contracts, cost of equipment, things of that nature.
I think the city manager just explained the whole situation to him. Go ahead, Mayor.
Right, so the, I know we have, the managers brought up, we have the water rate symposium we're going to have, and I'll be honest, when I first became an alderman, I was told to counsel that back then, I heard was losing money and they had to, they did this automatic nonsense. And I go, well, what's our goal? I was told, well, we only want to make $1 million. We got to $1 million a year because you have to pay infrastructure, right? All of a sudden, it's going farther and farther with these 8% increases, and then we kind of stopped that stuff. I understand with the treatment plant, we have to cover the mortgage, we have to cover operating expenses. So I guess when we're going to have the symposium, well, where is that we're going to stop? Because I've always said, once the treatment plant is going to be paid for, we're not just going to collect this extra $1.9 million because we want to. I mean, I've always said we should sunset some of those fees and give it back to the residents. I mean, we're just, okay.
Alderman, Messina, has a comment to throw in.
I guess I'm looking at this model a little differently. I'm looking at this as, I'm kind of peeling back from 3.7 in the green, right? If this all plans out. So let's assume that you don't want to reduce, or you don't want to increase, you want to do a 2% increase. But we need to understand when we make a decision that this model is going to change, and then that 3.7 is actually going to be 3.2. So the way I look at it is, as long as you keep me at zero, if I get to zero, and we have 3.7 in the green, I'm still delivering automation, I'm still saving on cost for public works, I'm getting ahead of any hype bursts that we all know. We get those emails in the middle of the day, and it's going to take 25 people, triple overtime, to get out there. So the way I look at it, in 20 years, if that's my green number and I break even, I'm still delivering in, in exceptional service to our residents, and we're going to get ahead of all the other capital improvement stuff that likely this will prevent, hopefully.
Yeah, so as I said earlier, this is a very preliminary cash flow. Once we get through those vendor symposiums, we'll actually do one of these for each different system that you want to see. So if you want to vet five different meter manufacturers and three different reading systems, we'll put these together for all of them to show you. You dictate what you want to see. If you want to see the operational savings at zero, to be very conservative. If you want to see the annual water and sewer rates at one, I mean, we can build these however you want. This is just a starting point.
Alderman, Messina?
So we're not here all night. I would say like, for the sake of, I, number one, obviously your audit, which is what we're talking about today, if, for instance, you guys got the real data, right, we got refined, would we have the option of, like, do we know what the fee would be for you? So let's say you came back with the real numbers and with these assumptions, we're no longer assumptions, because they're a little scary, but they're the reality, could we then say, all right, we just can't win?
So as, as in your packet, I believe that there was a sample letter of intent in these models how you want. If we get to the end of that and you say, you know what, Danielle, we don't want to do this, there's a break fee of 50,000 in that letter of intent. The city would be on the hook to pay the break fee if they chose to move to a performance contract that would roll into the, the model.
And I'd like to make a motion to move forward with the investment grade audit from vendor chief. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
No, we haven't moved ahead in a second.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, sorry. Alderman Arty Woods?
Thank you. So, if I remember correctly, we're saying we're going to get back to 15 to 17% of the money that we're missing, so are you basically saying that the average resident's water bill is going to go, even though the rates aren't changing, the average resident's going to see a 15 to 17% increase in their water bill?
Director Lang?
So, majority of our real water losses are on our end of the system, not the, the user's side. There's a very small percentage, which is based on customer inaccuracies from metering, the vast majority, 60 million gallons a year approximately, are from real water losses, from water main breaks and things like that. So, that's part of what we're trying to reduce with the leak detection infrastructure as well.
Continue.
Just, just one follow-up. I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the technology, and I know when it works, it works great, but just to play devil's advocate, I Googled "city switching to smart water meter," and the first terrifying article that comes up is "City of San Diego Gives Smart Meters A Second Chance After Overcharging Millions Of Dollars For Water." So, what kind of contingency plans are in place for any potential overcharges?
So, I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
That's where the data integration piece is critical, and our, our process for addressing that and to avoid that from happening is, you know, as we're implementing, the first piece that's going to go up is the infrastructure of the AMI. We're going to get the system working so that we can actually install one meter and test, and test the read from start to finish. So, we're going to follow that read from the meter to the billing software and, and create an actual test bill. We do this for all sizes of meters that we're going to be installing, and we do this in conjunction with your billing software company and the meter vendors, and that's how we ensure that you're not going to be charged, overcharged. And that happens when those details aren't paid attention to, when the data integration piece is off.
Alderman Messina, you had a follow-up?
Well, the data integration, I wasn't, that wasn't my question because I forgot that one, but your data integration piece is important, that if we captured the right data and you guys have that, that also can help us budget. So, when we start seeing leaks pop up all over on this, I'm hoping that with the right data integration and some of these dashboards, it becomes very easy for you guys to say, all right, you, with Brad, looking at this data, we need to start budgeting more for this, or we're seeing a bunch of dots in this area, right? Kind of like?
Exactly.
Right? So, I'm, I'm hoping there's even bigger benefits that are not even on that spreadsheet.
Alderman Woods?
Thank you. So, follow-up on a couple of those things, because we've got layers and layers of math there, right? We've, we've got the math of the meter, right, our meter degradating, your new meter at a higher accuracy rate that degradates at a much lower rate, right? So, that's a savings piece.
Yes.
And that's above and beyond the 17% savings piece, or is it part and parcel of the 17.5% savings?
It's part of the 17%.
Of the 17, the follow-up. So, of the 17.5% piece, you mentioned that the water main breaks and stuff, because I was going to ask, what part of that is fire, water main break? I'll call it pre-meter loss, right, versus after-meter loss, which is what the other side of the table is asking about. Do we have a breakdown?
So, our losses that we reported on our LMO two last year, we reported about 69 million gallons of water loss. Nine million of that was from assumed losses, which are part of metering inaccuracies and things of that nature, possible, you know, billing deficiencies, and then 60 million were real losses, which are water main breaks, fire uses, hydrant flushing, and things like that.
So, as a follow-up, because now you've switched the format of numbers.
Percentage-wise, I'm not sure what it is, so.
Right, so, I don't know then what that actually means when you start converting them back and forth. So, I'm, I'm, I'm forward, it makes sense, the technology piece is always a good thing. I have two questions. One, we're going to spend money that we didn't budget for, so is this something we can start to do often, or is this just going to be a, a one-off thing? Mr. Wilson?
Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, if you go forward to, to the next slide.
This one?
Yeah. No, no, I can, I'm just looking here. So, the, the process, I'm just looking at here to see where we're at. So, I think order materials is March, March, April, sample billings and whatnot. So, by the time they go through the investment grade audit, order the materials, get the materials and whatever, will be in the next fiscal year, and so we'll be able to build this in to next year's budget.
And I get the timing of it, the overlapping of it, but we're incurring the expense now, right? They're going to work now, they're going to order now, they're going to apply now, we're just going to pay later, correct?
Pretty much.
So, we're incurring the expense.
We're incurring the expense.
Presently, and we're going to use money from the upcoming fiscal year to pay for it.
Correct.
Okay, that was, that was the, the question, so, I, and the follow-up to that was, is that something we can start to, to do?
Brad?
Are you talking from a budgetary standpoint or?
Yeah, just as a general, if I come up with something and I go, we don't have the money for it, or anybody else up here comes up with something and goes, it's a great idea and we don't have the money, but the guy's willing to get paid next year. Because that's all that is. They're saying, we're starting, you just don't have to pay us until sometime in the future.
Well, we won't, really won't be able to get to a contract until next year because of what has to be done during the investment grade audit.
Brad?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's not dissimilar theoretically, you know, from doing an engineering study on the project or something to that effect. Also, I know Jeff famously said this before, some projects come in over budget, some projects come in under budget. So, in looking through the CIP, there are different areas available that this will impact, that we're going to be able to utilize, that this project will offset those costs. So, it's not a complete blind rabbit hole that we're going down here. We have looked at the budget to see where, where this is going to come from and the offsetting costs on it, so it's, I understand your, your question.
Right, and I, and I agree with everything you just said, and I know it's not a blind rabbit hole. All I'm asking is a, a policy question then, is this something that we can do? If I come up and I say I found some, right, I found some software that we can use, and it'll save us, column six, $350,000, can we, can we do that?
I think with all policy decisions, I don't want Jeff or the mayor to disagree with me, but I think relative to policy decisions, if it's a Thursday night and there's five votes, then you can do it. If there's not five votes, then you can't.
Okay. Alderman Catalano, you've had your hand up.
Yeah, going back to the, the meter change, if the, if a resident wants to opt out, that they don't want their meter changed, is that what's going to happen?
Director Lang?
So, we actually, the city owns the meters, there, there are structures that are used for our building purposes, so they wouldn't have the option of opting out.
But you still have to go inside their home to pull the?
Correct, yeah. Eventually, all of the meters in the city are going to need to be replaced anyway, just because they're, they're not functioning properly, you know, things happen, the frost plate cracks and things like that. So, eventually, every meter is how we'll need to be replaced, this is just doing it all under one program.
Good. So, are, when you say all of them will have to be replaced, right now, it's kind of, you know, maybe in three years, we'll have to replace some five years, I mean, this is, you know, next year, we're going to replace all the meters in the city, is that not correct?
Potentially correct, yes.
Okay, and?
Five, I hope so.
And then, I guess, my other question was, and I heard some kind of device on the pipes and water mains, so, I mean, are we going to be digging all over town to put these gadgets on to the, these pipes and water mains, or how does that work?
The leak detection for our infrastructure actually affixes to the fire hydrants, so it would be a non-invasive installation.
Okay, it affixes to the fire hydrant?
The valve, correct?
Okay.
The auxiliary valve to operate the fire.
Okay. Alderman Messina?
Just to take this home, we are voting tonight on the I, the IGA, on my, the audit, and essentially, if we do not move forward when we get that, we're essentially out 50,000. Not going to even go down this rabbit hole myself, but I know we've spent much more money on similar items. So, to me, I just, I'm very, very curious on when we vet out these numbers, right? What that looks like. Personally, I would ask you to just be more conservative, understand the dynamics, which I'm sure they've told you, none of us want to raise water rates, and we don't want to act on the assumption of that. So, while that 2 million something, 2.7 million, looks great to me, like I said, if I net out at zero, for me personally, and I am not going to speak to the other four, but I'm delivering all of this automation, like, all the stuff I said earlier, to me, that's still a win. Give me a little bit more green, other than zero, that's helpful, but hopefully, you're going to, I, I don't, to me, I just think that, can we just, is that what we're focusing on tonight, Brad? Like, just?
Brad, or Director Lang?
Yeah, I think tonight was to give you some information, a lot of information, to get to that investment grade audit, where we can get the more refined numbers, and I think all the numbers in there, I think, are probably either high on the expense side or low on the revenue side.
Yep.
And there's some, like, the maintenance verification, they had 20 years worth of that in there. I've talked to Danielle, I've had nausea about that, that's, that is not going to be 20 years' worth of that in there, what we've done. You know, there'll be some for sure, and I guess, to one, one point that you made there, you know, part of the goal of this project, at its core, aside from the automation and the cost alerts and whatever, is to actually be able to moderate, you know, read as not increase water rates. Because what's going to happen is, as these meters degrade, we're losing a little bit, and as that 15, 17% starts to pull apart, we have, we still have to pay for that water that we're buying that we don't know where it's going. So, as that, that number gets higher, the rates have to go higher to compensate for that. So, the tighter that 17 number gets, it's never going to be zero, just, just a little off there, it's never going to be zero, the tighter that number gets, actually, the greater control over the water rates we have going forward. And the bigger that, the farther away from zero that number gets, the less control we have, the closer it gets, the greater the control we have. So, that's, again, at its core, is, is one of the, the, the goals of this project, is to tighten the system up as much as you can.
One quick question on that, I mean, I think the mayor or somebody, maybe Jeff, mentioned that DuPage or the City of Chicago, the DuPage County Water Commission, I mean, their contract is up. How, were those numbers kind of put in there? Any estimates on that of them increasing water rates, or?
Yeah, so, yeah, as the mayor said, A, that's a pass-through, actually, their contract renewal conversation is the 28th of this month, I'll be attending that meeting to hear what they have to say. I believe, and Mr. Monica, I'm just reading the, the red line IGA, I think the City of Chicago is still going to have the ability to do a 10% increase every year. To your question, though, the majority of those numbers were focusing on the meter degradation and then the expenses of the AMI system, that didn't include the expense side for the City of Chicago, so.
Okay, Alderman Arty Woods?
Thank you. Just one final question, just so I'm clear and I'm okay approving this thing, but I'm approving this agreement, and the cost of this agreement is how much, and the length of this agreement is how much. So, we get the final audit, right? Is that six months, nine months, one year?
I think you had it at the end.
What's the cost of that amount of work that they're doing?
So, if you look at here, this December to February is basically what it's going to take to do the investment grade audit, so we anticipate getting back in front of the board January, February to bring the full contract for approval. And then, fast forward through construction, we wouldn't finish until February 2025.
So, just this portion would just be up until January, February of next year, and then, if you elect to proceed with the overall project, then, you know?
And so, the cost of that piece?
Is 50,000.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So, if you could clarify, that's, that's if we elect to not move forward with the overall project, we'd be on the hook for 50,000.
But if you move forward, that 50,000 is rolled into the full development of the, the full project, so you're not cutting us a check for 50,000 in February.
What, when you say the 50,000, I get that, but when, are we cutting them the check for 50,000?
So, it gets rolled into the overall construction project.
Okay.
Consulting fee.
Alderman Messina?
It's essentially a proof of concept, right? Is that what you're delivering us?
Right.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions?
So, if I could just really quickly show you guys, so, performance contracting is a contracting method we're proposing here. All of the communities we've done in Illinois for these particular types of projects have utilized this performance contracting method. It's very transparent, vendor neutral, the one thing they like is, it's no change orders, it's not like a subcontracting bid-spec type of procurement. If we give you that 5.25 number and that's what we go to contract for, we cannot come back, per legislation, and issue you a change order for the difference. So, we've got to make sure on the front end, we are buttoned up. And then, here's a list of communities that we've done in Illinois, these are just meter change-out, AMI implementation, and leak detection systems. They are all very good references, I'm happy to share any of the contacts with you if you'd like to reach out. We have in the past put utilities in touch with other utilities to ask questions, if utility billing wants to talk to utility billing about the customer portal. Go ahead.
Mayor, sorry.
Are we going to get a copy of this presentation, so?
Yes, I'll make sure the, the council gets a copy of the presentation.
I really like that light reading and figure the math out.
And if you want me to change anything and add a cash flow showing zeroed out, you know, operational savings or rates, I can always add that in.
No, the mayor will do that himself.
Could you just act on that assumption of zero, so that, just, I just, I feel, I just?
I may sneak it in there.
I just feel like, it's just, yeah, we're almost hurting, it should be helping the conversation, but it almost, some might focus on that so much that just assume it's zero, even though that's not true.
Brad?
Yeah, just one point on the, the performance contracting, it's the exact same thing we did with the police department HVAC boiler system, as well as the public works building, they're both performance contracts, so, as Danielle stated, we didn't see a change order for either one, so.
So, we don't need to change our motion or anything, not to exceed 50,000 or anything, that we're approving the, this, okay. I think we had enough questions, let's do a roll call on this.
Oh, just a quick question, because there's a lot of communities nearby, is part of your process going to be you maybe going over to Elk Grove, or Hanover, right? Hanover and spending time with those folks, or?
Yeah, we're going to send Danielle over there, she's already. I was going to say, one of the, one of the benefits that we have, a direct benefit is Mr. Stenson, IT director, who was directly involved with the Elmhurst project. So, he's actually been through the symposium before and implemented virtually this exact same project, but four and a half years ago.
Our whole team have, have been working on these projects for the past 12 years, it hasn't changed, we've done every single one of these projects together, and we did work with Mike in Elmhurst closely.
Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Arty Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
That passes. Items to be considered at future meetings, Tower One, Phase One Engineering, September 28th, Central Avenue, Phase Three Engineering, September 28th. Do we have anything to add? Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.